Can everyone hear me okay?
Hi Ken.
Thanks, Phil. We're gonna get started in a minute. If everyone can mute themselves at this time.
Whoops.
Give it one more minute.
Hello? Is the mayor?
No, this is just the public hearing. We're gonna get started in just a minute.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna ask everyone to mute themselves if they're not already muted. Okay. It's 5 o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Good afternoon. My name is Anne Fangman. I am the Executive Director and duly authorized Hearing Officer of the Glencov Industrial Development Agency, hereby known as the Agency. I have been authorized to hold a public hearing. Today is July 27, 2020, and the time is now 5:00 p.m. This is a public hearing pursuant to Section 859A of the New York General Municipal Laws amended, hereafter known as the Act, and is being held from Glencov City Hall, 913 Glenn Street, City of Glencov, County of Nassau, New York, because of the restrictions on meetings and gatherings in effect pursuant to executive orders issued by the Governor of the State of New York as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. This public hearing is being held via conference call rather than a public hearing open for the public to attend in person. It's being held on Teams with both a video option and a conference call option. RXR Glen Isle Partners LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the State of Delaware and authorized to do business in the state of New York, hereafter known as RXR, presented a certain application for financial assistance hereafter the initial application to the agency, which initial application requested that the agency consider undertaking a mixed-use project, hereafter the original project consisting of the following: The acquisition of an interest in approximately 56 acres of land, hereafter the land, located on Garvey's Point Road, Herb Hill Road, and Dixon Street in the city of Glencov, New York; B, the acquisition and construction on the land by RXR as part of the planned Smart Growth Community of certain buildings and other improvements, containing in the aggregate approximately 1,800,000 square feet of space, comprising approximately 1,720,000 square feet of space, containing a total of up to 486 rental residential units, 513 sale condominium units, and 111 workforce housing units, 55 for rent, and 56 for sale, collectively the residential units; and C, up to approximately 75,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, cultural, and related space, collectively the commercial space and together with the residential units, the improvements; and D, the acquisition and installation in and around the improvements of certain items of machinery, personal property, fixtures, and equipment, the equipment, and together with the land and the improvements, the facility. RXR leased the facility to the agency pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in that certain lease agreement dated as of November 1, 2016 by and among RXR Glencov Local Economic Assistance Corporation, otherwise the GCLAC, and the agency as amended as the original lease. The agency subleased the facility to RXR pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in that certain leaseback agreement dated as of November 1, 2016 between RXR and the agency, as amended the original leaseback agreement, and the other documents, instruments, and agreements executed by RXR and/or the agency in connection with the original project, collectively the original transaction documents. In connection with the original project, RXR and the agency entered into that certain Garvey's Point Continuing Covenants Agreement dated as of November 22, 2016, as amended the covenants agreement pursuant to which RXR made certain continuing covenants to the agency and the city of Glencov, New York, hereafter the city relating to the original project. Pursuant to that certain bifurcation assignment and assumption agreement dated as of November 1, 2016, the bifurcation agreement among the agency, the GICLIC, RXR, and certain affiliates of RXR, RXR assigned its interest in and to the assumed documents as defined in the bifurcation agreement with respect to assigned site number two, as defined in the bifurcation agreement, to RXR Garvey's P1 Building H Owner LLC, otherwise known as the Building H Owner. Pursuant to that certain mortgage modification agreement dated as of November, July 1, 2017, the mortgage modification by and among Building H Owner, the agency, GICLIC, and the Bank of New York Mellon as trustee, hereafter the trustee, Building H Owner was released from its obligations with respect to the portion of assigned site two known as Private Use Improvement Area Lot 619, hereafter the Block G parcel or the Block G land, upon execution and delivery of (1) that certain lease agreement dated as of July 1, 2017, hereafter the Block G lease, by and among RXR, the GICLIC, and the agency, pursuant to which RXR leased the Block G parcel to the agency; and (2) that certain leaseback agreement dated as of July 1, 2017, hereafter the Block G leaseback agreement between the agency and RXR pursuant to which the agency subleased the Block G parcel to RXR. Pursuant to a notification and consent request letter dated March 5, 2019, hereafter the consent request letter, RXR requested that the agency consent to the transfer by RXR to G&amp;G Garvey's Point LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the State of New York, hereafter the assignee, of all of RXR's right, title, and interests in and to the Block G lease, the Block G leaseback agreement, and the related original transaction documents, collectively the assignment transaction as required by Section 18 of the covenants agreement. Garvey's Point Workforce LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the State of New York, hereafter the company, which is an affiliate of the assignee, presented an application for financial assistance hereafter the application to the agency, which application requested that the agency consider undertaking a project, hereafter the project consisting of the following: A, the consent by the agency to the assignment of all right, title, and interest of RXR in and to the Block G lease, the Block G leaseback, and the related original transaction documents to the company in place of the assignee; B, the construction, installation, and equipping of the buildings and improvements on the Block G parcel contemplated by the Block G leaseback agreement, collectively hereafter the Block G improvements, excuse me, by the company as agent of the agency; C, the assignment of certain furniture fixtures, machinery, and equipment necessary for the completion of the Block G improvements, collectively the Block G equipment and together with the Block G parcel and the Block G improvements, collectively the Block G project facility, by the company as agent of the agency; D, the granting of certain additional financial assistance within the meaning of Section 85414 of the Act with respect to the foregoing including potential exemptions or partial exemptions from sales and use taxes and mortgage recording taxes. The company or its designee would receive financial assistance from the agency in the form of potential exemptions or partial exemptions from sales and use taxes and mortgage recording taxes, collectively hereafter the financial assistance. The Block G project facility would be initially owned, operated, or managed by the company or its designees. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Glencov Herald Gazette on July 16, 2020 and provided to the Chief Executive Officer of each affected tax jurisdiction within which the project facility is or will be located by letter dated July 14, 2020. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for all interested parties to present their views, both orally and in writing with respect to the granting of the financial assistance contemplated by the agency or the location or nature of the project. The notice of this public hearing stated that members of the public may listen to this public hearing and provide their comments during the public hearing by calling 1-929-229-5717 and entering access code 467329998. Members of the public may also participate via Microsoft Teams by entering the meeting links set forth in the notice of public hearing, and that was also posted on the website. As set forth in the notice of public hearing, comments may also be submitted to the agency in writing or electronically to myself, Anne Fangman, Executive Director, Glencov IDA, 9 Glenn Street, Glencov, New York 11542, or by email, A recording of this public hearing is being made and will be posted on the agency's website, all in accordance with Section 857 of the New York General Municipal Law as amended. In addition, a transcript of this hearing will be made and posted on the agency's website, and such transcript or reasonable summary of all comments received by the agency shall be provided to the agency's members. Comments received in writing will also be included in the transcript in any summary of this public hearing. If any member of the public wishes to make comments via the conference call or the Teams meeting, I would ask that each person identify themselves and provide their address. I request the patience and cooperation of all participants in allowing each person to finish their comments before anyone else identifies themselves and begins speaking. Is there anyone wishing to be heard with respect to the project or the financial assistance?
I'd love to be. How do I do it?
Please state your name and your address, and then your comment, please.
Ray Krupka, 48 The Place in Glencov. And my comments are that it seems that the IDA has a very bad track record for making good deals, as well as the rest of Glencov's municipality. Every time I look at a report, it seems like our numbers are so much higher than anybody else. Why does it cost Glencov IDA $43,600 something dollars per job when the next highest is Hempstead? That only pays $11,700 per job. Haven't we given enough money away yet? I mean, every time I look at something where Glencov has negotiated a deal, like the amount to pay taxes via credit cards, our numbers are so much higher than anybody else. I have to worry about the fiduciary responsibility of the people in charge. Haven't we given enough money and deals to the Garvey's Point program? Held all that property for something like $4 million. This has gone way too far, and I think that they should be able to complete the project without any more handouts. We already have put our city into a situation where our bond rating is nearing junk, and we can't go any further. People in this city have given enough. Thank you.
Can you please spell your first and last name for the record?
Ray, R-A-Y, and the last name is Krupka, K-R-U-P as in Paul, K-A.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? Yes? Please state your name and your address for the record. I'm sorry. Someone had said they wanted to make a comment. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
I'd like to make a comment. I think someone else is speaking at the same time.
No. I don't believe so. How about we start with your name?
This is Grace Glensky.
Okay. And your address?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Glensky, please continue.
I was checking. As a real estate broker, I have access to many facts and information that perhaps is not available to others. And I wanted to let you know that currently, just recently closed sales of foreclosed properties in Glencov, there are 47 residences that recently were in foreclosure that sold in Glencov. Now, a great deal of the problem is that the taxes that the homeowners pay is too high for them to keep paying their mortgages and their taxes, and therefore they go into foreclosure. I mean, I think it's very kind for our community to be so generous that RXR got a $200 million bond, and they're saving $400 million in taxes over the 40 years of their tax break. Now, $400 million that we homeowners have to pay because RXR isn't paying it. In addition to that, I understand that when the homes are sold at Garvey's Point, let's say the condo is there, a homeowner there who has a homeowner there, let's say they pay $30,000 in taxes, that $30,000 goes to RXR. It does not come to Glencov, which is my understanding of the fact. So, I really feel that we've been very generous, and I think we've been kind to RXR. And it's lovely to be generous, but I think there's also a limit because we've gotten to the point where homeowners can't survive here. And if a homeowner can't survive, the town cannot survive. And I don't think the town wants to self-destruct, Joseph. I mean, the way we're going, we're self-destructing because we cannot afford to constantly keep giving to multi-billionaire, multi-millionaire developers. I mean, they're not going to give us a benefit for 40 years. Many of us will not be here by then. So, there's really no benefit to Glencov or to the current taxpayer for at least 40 years. Meanwhile, they're going to inhabit the place, have kids go to school, use our municipal services, use the police, use the fire department, use our water, all these things which you have a very limited supply of. So, I'm really concerned for the benefit and the future and the strength of continuing Glencov. All of us who are taxpayers, I think we've paid enough, and I don't think we can take on anymore on our shoulders. So, I really would wish that you would reconsider this application and listen to the public. For a change, please listen to the public.
Thank you.
47 houses are in foreclosure in Glencov, currently sold because they're in foreclosure. That's not a good record. And I'm sure you don't want to see more of your neighbors going into foreclosure and having to move out. And I'm sure that isn't what the goal is here. So, I know you all have a heart. You're all working for helping everyone. That is your goal. Well, please help the taxpayer, not just the developer. I think we've helped the developer tremendously. He's getting $400 million in tax breaks over 40 years. I mean, that's a lot of money. I'm sure you have to agree.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Silverman, I see your hand raised. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fangman. And just for the record, I am speaking as a resident taxpayer, not as a councilperson. And as you know, I have attended IDA hearings and meetings for several years, even before I was in elected office. So, I'm participating in that role as a resident taxpayer citizen of Glencov. And everything I say is public record and not confidential information as a councilperson. So, you know, first off, I've said this at prior hearings in the past, the intention of industrial development agencies is primarily to stimulate a local economy through creating jobs. The original application from the Garvey's Point Waterfront Development included the 40-year pilot that most of us know of and had construction jobs as well as a few full-time jobs included in that. This development, this application includes jobs that were already included in that first application. So, we are not this application is not attracting new business, new jobs, or simulating our economy more than what was approved several years ago back in 2016. So, to give away additional tax dollars is not prudent on top of what has already been distributed. The additional money is not going to be used to attract something new. They are building here. They have their site plan approvals. They are building. You know, the excuse was used in 2016 that if we do not give tax breaks, the developer will walk away. These guys are here. They are building. If they can't build and they need this financial assistance, they shouldn't have been approved for what they're building then. The second point I'd like to make is that many may argue that a sales tax abatement which they are requesting doesn't directly impact Glencov, but it does. Not as directly as the pilots or, you know, property tax abatements that directly come into the Glencov coffers, but the sales tax goes to the state and county, and Glencov does get a portion of that. The recent Moody's rating when we went out for a bond issuance, Moody's downgraded us with the primary reason cited being that our sales tax revenue is expecting to have a significant shortfall primarily due to COVID. And, you know, businesses are struggling. People are retail sales. Sales are down. The state, the county, the city are going to have shortfalls in that area, especially at this time. I can't fathom why Glencov would consider giving away more tax dollars that should come into the state, county, and city when we already are expecting millions in shortfalls that will significantly impact our budget, the county's budget, and the state's budget.
Amen.
So, well, thank you. Those are my key points. One other question I have, not a statement or argument, is I see the chairman of the IDA board on this call, but I do not see other members of the IDA board on this call. And I was curious as to why they wouldn't be here listening to the public when they have to vote on this. And my second question is, I believe there is an IDA meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I do not see this on the agenda, this financial assistance, but was wondering, will this be voted on tomorrow or at a later date? Wondering if I could get answers to those, if you don't mind.
Melvin, how do you want to handle? You're muted.
Okay. Norman, we don't usually answer questions because it's supposed to be, you know, listening to the public, but yours is a fairly straightforward question, and the answer is tentatively on the agenda for tomorrow.
I'm sorry. Mr. Tyler, you cut out. It is or is not on the agenda for tomorrow?
It is tentatively on the agenda for tomorrow.
So, with the board not on this call, as far as I don't see their names as attendees, they're not listening to the public, and they're tentatively voting tomorrow. Just curious about that.
Pursuant to the statute, all of us from the IDA are taking copious notes, and we will very summary of all of comments and present that to the board members.
But the session is today. The vote is tomorrow. Anybody that couldn't get on this call, I couldn't get on the web server call, has no opportunity to write in and make any comments because you're ramming this thing through before anybody gets a chance to think about it. I mean, you gotta give people at least a week or two to network and get some information back to you rather than just off the top.
Was that Mr. Krupka who just spoke?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I what you're saying, and we will add that to your comments.
Thank you.
Can I comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. One second.
Yes, please state your name and your address.
Cheryl Stasky, 59 Hitching Post Lane. I also couldn't access on the iPad, so I called in. My number one issue is the school access with the whole Garvey's Point. How many kids are going into the school and what's the impact for us? And what's the impact for us tax-wise? I did send a letter to the school district or email three months ago, did not get a response. And I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but I think this might be the workforce housing, which gave the developer all the benefits because they were during doing workforce housing. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any additional comments?
Does that mean it's not being answered?
The format for the public hearing is that we take down and record all the comments and questions presented. A summary is prepared and that summary is provided to the IDA board members before their vote.
Does that mean we don't get answers to the questions?
It'll be part of the meeting transcript, the summary.
I have an additional question. I would like to know when a public hearing is going to be done in person?
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that yet. It depends on the COVID situation and the governor's office. And I've been in touch with the mayor's office on that. And, you know, as of now, I don't have any answers as to when we're going to start holding our hearings in person.
Okay, well, I think that all of the decisions should be put on hold until such time as the public has the true opportunity to discuss it in person with every, every single board, whether it's planning board, zoning board, IDA, CDA, or city council. I don't think decisions should be made without having the opportunity for the public's input as is a normal procedure. Because this is hardly considered normal procedure. Just said in a phone conversation with three people from the public when there are 26,000 people in this public of Glen Cove. And normally, when there's an important discussion, City Hall has a great deal of turnout. There's a lot of public interest when we can participate in person. A lot of people might be at work, might not even be aware of this public hearing right now. I think most of the population has no clue about this.
Ms. Fegman, do you mind if I actually address that? We have 18 people on the call right now and we're following the same procedure that we would have followed at City Hall. I have to say, this is one of the best-attended public hearings that we've ever had. It might be the best-attended public hearing. So I'm actually thinking that being able to have this remote option may have enabled some folk that may have not been able to make it out in the past. But what I will say is we do have 18 people on the line. And, you know, just in my memory of the last few years, I have to say this is a well-attended public hearing for us, at least for the IDA.
Well, thank you. And this is Mr. Krupka one more time. I have to say that you may feel that 18 people is a quorum in the city. And that's one of the issues with the reason that the economy in this city is so bad. You don't make it available. The bulk of the people seeing that notice in the Herald with nothing but legalese and pointing to other exhibits gives nobody a true clear picture of what was being presented tonight. That, with addition at the online meeting, is for some reason not working. Is a primary reason that this needs to be held over. And that they should not tomorrow until, you know, you can really get a full quorum from the city. 18 people making this decision is ridiculous. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments?
I have one.
Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Maria Tambini.
Do you mind spelling that, please?
T-A-M-B-I-N-I.
And then your last name, please?
Tambini, T-A-M-B-I-N-I.
And your first name, please?
Maria.
Thank you.
I have a question. What was it that changed with RXR that prompted this whole discussion about additional monies given to them? What conditions changed with RXR that promoted this kind of request and dialogue with Glen Cove? I don't know. I haven't seen anything. So what was the big change? Can anyone answer that?
Your question was noted and it will be answered in the summary of the meeting. That will be provided to our IDA members and also posted on the website.
Okay, I just want to make one final comment, if I may. The idea that this kind of a meeting is being held and you believe that this is more than adequate for some kind of policy decision to go forward when there are 17 or 18 people who are listening to this conversation but are not able to get a back and forth with anyone who's sitting in a seat of authority is not just unfavorable, it's arrogant. And I think that this, this kind of procedure where people are patted on the head because they've tuned in remotely to simply listen to a bunch of questions that are not being answered under the guise that it's being recorded and it will be under consideration at some later date, in this case tomorrow. And these decisions are so profound to the city of Glen Cove, which is now burdened with a negative rating from Moody's. I think for you to take this high-handed approach to us and what our concerns are and our need for immediate answers, I think that this is unconscionable. It's arrogant. And I think it needs to be stopped right now. And I think people ought to write about it, let the rest of the town know that unelected officials are going to make these decisions. I think it needs to stop. That's my final comment.
Thank you. And I agree that, I understand that, you know, the feelings that 17, 18, 20 people may not be enough. I just wanted to make the comment that it's one of our best-attended public hearings in recent history. That's all.
Well, that was a silly comment. That was a silly comment because it's compared to what? You're always comparing it to the, to the best situation, to compare it to low turnouts that you claim have plagued you for a long time and then say, isn't this wonderful? I mean, that's just silly. That's nonsensical. And it needs to stop right now.
Thank you for your comments.
I think it might answer the reason that we're in this situation because there is not proper information given out prior to these meetings. I mean, like I said, putting something in the back of the Herald is not a reasonable, you know, notification to the city. And people are not checking your website on a weekly basis to see what meetings are coming up. So when you have, when you decide that you're going to be spending the city and the population's money, this needs to be made publicly aware to all of the people so that they all have an opportunity. And for you to say you're happy with 18 people, that tells me that the whole process has been in error from the beginning. It's just not a quorum.
Again, this is Cheryl Stasky.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Krupka?
Yes, it was.
Thank you for your comments. Can we have, Joan Phillips, I see, is raising her hand. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I feel that the number of people from the IDA on this meeting are insufficient. In other words, this is an extremely important decision. The residents are at a breaking point, as has been said. It is really such a critical point in our future to be dealing with giving away more money at a time when everything is going downwards and spiraling down catastrophically. We have to stop. First of all, the fact that this meeting was at 5:00 PM, not the best for many people. Secondly, this is not the easiest format for someone who is not particularly IP experienced. I mean, you do have to upload the app and go through some degree of involvement to get online. But we're just, it doesn't make sense. We aren't getting anything out of this, as something was, as was mentioned. No new jobs, no new benefits. The deal was done. How can we go back in time and readdress it? And I really feel absolutely this should not be voted on without more input from the city being acknowledged and also requested. We need to get to the people who can't come online to these meetings. We need to have plain language. I read through it also. And I'll tell you, I'm not an attorney and it boggles my mind to try to make sense out of it. The only thing I get out of it is that we would again be giving back to RXR. It doesn't make sense. I see so many homes being for sale. I see the pain of my fellow residents. All of us, for the most part, are very much in trouble with this. And we're looking to you for relief. We're looking to you to look after us also, not just the developers. So please, please, don't put this to a vote without tabling this for more discussion. I also suggest, if there's any way that you could possibly do it, Ms. Fangman, to have a meeting possibly outdoors with social distancing because I really think that you would get far, far more than 18 people. So please request that of your fellow members. And would you get back to us? And again, I can't reiterate more strongly that this needs to be put on hold for a bit longer for more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, before anyone else speaks, this is Mayor Tanky. I just wanted to, I want to say, I am listening to what's going on here. And I do hear your concerns. And, and one of the things that I would like to know is really have the information given to the other IDA board members so that they can, they can understand the concerns of even the least of these few people that are here. And you're right, I mean, we should have, I wish we had more people here that were voicing what their concerns are. But certainly, certainly, I don't know if we need to rush into this. I don't know if there is a time thing that we need to have this done by. But if that is not the case, I don't see an issue about sitting down and talking about this with the board and making that information public to you as to what our decision will be based on what the, you know, the new building at Georgia Green will be building at this site as well as what the benefit might be to the city. And I certainly like to have that information as well. So everything that you're saying here, I am listening to and I am taking it to heart. So we'll have this discussion for sure. And I may pull this off the agenda tomorrow. I'm not, I'll have to talk to the board members, but that's certainly a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's the appropriate response.
Can I make another comment? This is Cheryl Stasky, 59 Hitching Post.
Yeah, Cheryl, go ahead. Carol, I'm sorry. Is it Cheryl or Carol?
Cheryl.
Cheryl.
The school, we have to determine at that whole development how many kids there are because they already got their deal tax-wise. What is it?
I heard your question earlier with that, and I will look into that for you.
And workforce housing?
Yes.
And look at the benefits that we've already given. Should we be giving more?
Absolutely. And like I said, I agree with what's being said here. And I have very similar concerns. I'd like to know what they are. This project is going to be built. However, we're looking at other projects that are going to be coming down the line that people may be looking for, for help. And we really need to look at these on an individual basis as to what the benefits are to our community before we give, we give away some of these benefits to them. But I don't want to get into those discussions right now, but certainly those are considerations.
Millen, should we address any of the questions? Should we address any of the questions or any further information about the project now? Or is the best practice to have is the summary?
Not enough people to really address it.
Yeah, am I on mute? Okay. I think, and my suggestion is, there have been an awful lot of on my notes, and I'm sure you have. And I think that we ought to synthesize all of them, present the, there are a lot of good questions. There's a lot of misconceptions. But rather than doing them one by one, my suggestion is that we collect our notes and present these all to the board. And as the chairman said, you know, if the board members think that there are enough unanswered questions and they want to adjourn the vote, that's obviously up to the board tomorrow. So that's my suggestion. Quite honestly, there's an awful lot of good questions and they should be answered. And I think that they will be answered to the board. And that's quite honestly, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear a number of people and what sort of the general concerns are and make sure that the board hears the questions and has, and gets the answers to them before they make a decision.
And that's really all I was saying earlier to, you know, Millen. I just want to make sure that, one, that the people who are asking questions here today realize that I am going to speak to them, bringing up these questions as you transcribe them now. But I also want to get answers to these people because they deserve answers to these questions that they have.
I'd like to make a comment. My name is Missy Small, 3 Redwood Pass.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
It's Missy Small, 3 Redwood Pass.
Okay, thank you.
My first comment is, if this meeting is so important, I would assume that all of the IDA members would have made time to be on this call. I find it surprising that people who are going to be making a decision tomorrow would not give the time to the public who are asking these questions would not respect us enough to be on this call. That's my first comment. Second, the reason I think that there are so few people on this call and discussing this topic, because I've spoken to people in Glen Cove, and a lot of people are tired and feel that no matter how much they say or how many comments they bring up to either the planning board or the IDA, those comments are not listened to. Basically, you listen to the comments because you have to, but you don't take in any of the comments. And I think that's perfectly reflected, again, by the fact that the IDA board members could not bother to get on this call. Thank you.
May I add a comment?
Yes, please. Can you state your name?
Yes, Joan Phillips. And I just want to say that in terms of the numbers on the meeting tonight, you were congratulating the, and celebrating the numbers of people at this meeting. And to what I am seeing, many of them are council officials who are the And to what I am seeing, many of them are council officials or they are the mayor and I don't know who is on here from the IDA, but you don't have 18 residents who have no other involvement other than that of being a resident. And yes, I am truly offended that the whole board, with the exception of anyone who absolutely couldn't make it, was not on here to hear it. To deal with a big decision like this that's going to affect Glen Cove's future, very much so, to not, to just be able to read a summary of notes and make such a big decision about our future, I feel it's just totally, totally wrong to do it that way. I feel very, very strongly. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments at this time?
I'll tell you in a minute.
I see a couple hands raised. Ms. Phillips, I believe you just spoke. I see another hand raised. Does anyone else wish to give any more comment? All right, I want to thank everybody that participated in this hearing tonight. All of your comments have been taken down and will be answered and will be summarized and given to our IDA board members and also prepared as part of the meeting transcript. It is now 5:50 PM. Let the record show that other than comments submitted in writing, that no other members of the public have indicated a desire to comment with respect to the project or the financial assistance. And I hereby call this hearing to a close. The time is 5:51.
Thank you, everyone for attending. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.